We'll call this meeting to order, and can we please get a roll call vote of attendance? Chairperson Montague.
Here.
Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Quarter.
Here.
Liz.
Here.
Mayor.
Mayor.
Mayor. Nelson here, and Heather Selle.
Here.
Our first and almost only item is an application, final plat and plan unit development, location lot one, triangle subdivision zone, commercial, general commercial. Applicant Tom Kennedy, law offices of Thomas Kennedy, owner Jake Cantor, Alpine Homes Ridgeway LLC. Approval of final PUD and final plat. A portion of lot one, triangle subdivision. I think we all know where it is. And I've read the rest of it, Riverfront Village, final PUD and final plat. TJ.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi there.
It's always a struggle doing this on one screen, so my apologies, and let's see, okay, can everybody see this?
Yes.
Good, okay. Well, good evening, and as you mentioned, we have Riverfront Village subdivision, that's the final plat and a PUD in front of you. So just bigger picture, this has been reviewed both sketch plan and preliminary plans. Previously, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna try to just touch on some of the high points. The things that deviate from the code standards, just to remind you. Kind of some changes since the preliminary plat, but in essence, I'm not gonna touch into too many things, and there's a lot more detail in the staff report, so. I'm gonna try to go through generally, I'm gonna make an assumption that you all have understand the project, and that if for any public listening, there's a staff report in the record as well. So, that's kind of where we're at, as you mentioned, the owner is Jake Cantor with Alpine Homes Ridgeway LLC, the applicant is Tom Kennedy, I do see Tom here, I don't know if Jake is in the audience. And I saw some other people, the project team here, so I'm sure they'll give a presentation here in a minute. Portion of lot one, triangle subdivision, as mentioned, it's zoned, general commercial, the idea is to to change it to a PUD overlay, will retain its underlying zone district. And it's totaling four point two nine acres. Just the overall concept that's being proposed is three family, three multifamily buildings. Five sets of attached townhomes, those are along the river and kind of the graph, the map that you're looking at, they're on kind of the bottom. And, and, you know, we're gonna call it, I think I'd use it somewhat interchangeably through here, that duplex and townhomes, generally the same. So they're technically townhomes per the code, but there are only two of them attached. And then there's one mixed-use building, total of thirty-eight residential units and three thou, just under four thousand square feet of commercial units. There is an internal roadway with water and sewer, we'll talk a little bit more about that. There's also the river trail that runs along the river there to the, I guess on the bottom of the page, which is actually west, and a park that's, as you're looking at this graphic, over on the left hand, that corner by the part between the parking lot and the trail, and again, we'll talk more about those, but that generally gets you situated with the, the proposed. Quick analysis, you know, it's it is a little bit less than the maximum density allowed in the zone, the future land use now, so land use classification per the town code. But it's, you know, nine dwelling units per acre where the town, the master plan of the future land use classification allows up to eighteen, between twelve and eighteen. But the land uses are consistent, three stories, that's consistent with what's being proposed. Primary uses of retail, commercial services, restaurants, all that. There, the secondary would be multifamily, mixed-use kind of buildings, and that all seems consistent with the master plan. So I won't go through a lot of this stuff, but again, it's staff feels that it's consistent with the master plan, goals and objectives. Currently, the property is, well, I guess now it's a construction site, but vacant. Now, just to remind everybody that with a PUD, conditional uses within the within the underlying zone district may be allowed by right if it's specified in the PUD, and in this particular case, there are three that are going from conditional to allowed by right, one being townhomes. Those are conditional in the GC zone district, and they're permitted by right, if you will, in the PUD. Multifamily buildings greater than ten thousand square feet, they have two of them that are over ten thousand square feet, and then multifamily buildings with a maximum height of thirty-five feet. So basically, between twenty-seven and thirty-five feet requires a conditional approval, and both of those buildings fall within that as well. Trail connections, first, there's the River Corridor Trail, that goes along, as I mentioned, along the eastern, sorry, the western property boundary. Then there's also the pedestrian trail, and you might remember, we talked about this somewhat at length during the preliminary plan process, that there was, there's a social trail that goes from five fifty to the river trail, and essentially connects to downtown. There was a desire to keep that, and that's now routed through the property along the south property line, and we could point that out later on. But that connection is memorialized through easements and construction. Also, of note, that the short-term rentals per plat note and the covenants are limited to all of the townhomes, and so those are those duplex units along the western side of the property. The dimensional standards, what you'll see here is the required and the proposed. And only the high, the red that are highlighted in red here are the ones that don't meet the underlying zone district standards, and those are the ones that we've talked about. The ones that we didn't though, on the bottom there, are the, we'll show a site plan. It shows that, but the setback from the high watermark requires seventy-five feet, they're requesting to go less than that, which is again, a conditional approval, and is being wrapped up into the, the PUD request. Again, there's, there's a big part of this project that has public access. The park and the trail, as well as the, the public access trail through the property, about eleven percent, or almost twelve percent of the property is actually open to the public. It's important to note, too, that none of those public areas are being dedicated to the town or another entity, they're all retained by the property owner, I believe it's gonna be an HOA, but be easements that are for public access. The park that's being proposed is more of a passive type park. So there'll be shelters, some picnic tables, and things like that, as opposed to, you know, ball fields or things like that. The pedestrian connection, as I mentioned. Parking, again, the table shows kind of what's required and what's proposed. All in all, they're meeting the town standards. Based on those standards, sixty-four is required, and they're providing ninety-eight, that's a kind of a range of typical surface parking lots, plus garages, plus guest parking for the residential units. And I have a slide here, oh, hey, look at that, there it is. So these blue areas are the surface parking and guest parking. The stars, the blue stars are the kind of garage parking for each unit. And then the green stars, and can you guys see my mouse? So the darker green star, which is kind of to the bottom left of the screen, is the main entrance. The lighter green, kind of up in the middle of the the picture here, is an emergency access easement, an emergency secondary access, and then the yellow highlights are just the emergency accesses throughout the property or the project to make sure that you can get secondary egress in case of an emergency. So again, this is just showing circulation and parking throughout the project, and we do feel that this system provides some good adequate circulation. Water and sewer, I'm gonna go ahead and kind of talk these together, because, you know, the water is going to be a looped system per town code. It is connecting to the water line south of the property. The sewer is gonna be connecting similarly, and that's the graphic that you're seeing below here to the line on sixty-two as well. And there's a main that's being extended to the east, to five fifty, you can see that extension here, this fifteen inch. As was discussed in the staff report, through the construction, some of the sewer lines were not installed per town standards or meet the minimum standards, and per conversations with the applicant and the developer, they have opted to retain ownership and maintenance of the areas that I have kind of highlighted in red outline here. And that means that those won't be the responsibility of the town to own and maintain long term. I spell out a lot more detail of why, and we can talk about that if desired in the staff report. And, and we do have a condition number two that references that comment. Essentially to add a note to the plat, saying that those utilities or those lines will be the responsibility of the developer, or whatever entity that will be for the long term. Now, I think the last few slides here are just some graphics of the architecture design, looking through, everything is consistent with the with what was approved with the preliminary plan and PUD, so not much to talk about, the top two are the multifamily buildings. The bottom is the duplex, the townhomes, that'll be more along the river. This is the commercial building with some signage. Again, very, a master, a signed master plan was submitted and is included as part of the approval, and so that's you know, this slide showing a couple of those. This is also showing the landscaping and the lighting plan, which again, are consistent with the mass, the preliminary plan and preliminary plat. So with that, some of the formalities. All of the required notification was provided per the town code, I guess I should also mention that this is a project that started prior to the code update. So we're following previous code process, I apologize for not mentioning that earlier. To my knowledge, we haven't received any public comments on the request. And so with that, staff is recommending approval with conditions. To see my highlight here, four, in the staff report, there are three, and I was just talking to Preston this morning, and when I was putting the PowerPoint together, I realized that we might have neglected one, so it'll be number four, just go through, so anyways. Staff is recommending approval with the following criteria, conditions, one, prior to the town recording the final plat and PUD with the Uray County Clerk and Recorder's Office, an emergency access easement and utility easement, as depicted on the final plat, well, excuse me, shall be recorded on lot two, triangle subdivision. And two, prior to the recording of the final plat and PUD with the Uray County Clerk and Recorder's Office, a note shall be added to the final plat stating that the portions of the sewer line the developer will continue to own, maintain and repair, which has been approved by the town staff, that's the condition I was mentioning about sewer line. And number three, that prior to the town recording the final plat and PUD with the Uray County Clerk and Recorder's Office, all clerical, grammatical, technical and procedural non-material amendments to the application material be made as necessary to ensure the ability to enforce and administer the provisions pursuant to the Ridgeway Municipal Standards. And the new one that we added, hopefully it's not a surprise, and everybody's okay with it, but this will have subdivision improvement agreement, and so we just wanted to put the condition in there that at the added condition, that subdivision improvement agreement would be approved by town council. So, with that, I do provide a couple of alternatives, but with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have, and if not, we can concede the floor to the applicant and the owner.
Does anyone on the commission have a question for TJ? We will concede to the applicant and owner.
It sounds formal conceding. Hey, guys, Tom Kennedy here for the applicant, Alpine Homes Ridgeway LLC, they're the owner of the property and the developer, and we're glad to be at this point. It's been a thorough process, sketch plan, preliminary plan, and here we are at final, we're happy to be here, glad to be here. Per the code, a bunch of the infrastructure is, has been put in, there are some items where it just makes sense to do it after some of the construction is done, or as we're proceeding, you know, with, with the construction activities, just so we're not damaging things that we're we're building in terms of infrastructure, so we would be asking for a subdivision improvement agreement for those items, and we've been working carefully with your staff and your attorney on those items, so we feel good about where that stands. So, I'm here to talk about any questions that you might have on the plat. And if you have questions on the design plan, the PUD side of it, Jim Keough, our planner, is on the Zoom link, he's available to answer questions as well. I think TJ did a really good job of orienting everyone, giving you background, kind of reminding us where we've been and where we're at now as we're here for the final plat, and so I'm mostly here to answer questions, as is Jim, as is Jake Cantor, the owner's rep, if you have questions for us. We have reviewed the staff report and the staff conditions, we're okay with them. And we look forward to just getting through this phase of the project so that we can apply for the building permits, and again, that angle of the excited as well. Yeah. So, if you have any questions for any of us, I guess I can talk about the plat, we've, we've the plat actually, had to remind myself, it's probably three or four years old from when we started. Your staff has looked at it very, very carefully, and we made changes over the course of time, and we think it's in good, good shape, good condition. You know, and the additional comments, you know, we work with your staff on that additional plat note, so we're, like I said, I'm not making any further formal presentation, but we are here to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thanks. Does the commission have any questions for the applicant?
My main concern is this rather unusual sewer line situation, that this section of sewer line that you guys are in, rather than having to bring it up to town standard, you're gonna retain ownership and requirement of maintenance, what happens down the road when all the properties are sold and there'll be an HOA, I assume?
Yeah, so I can answer how, how we're gonna handle it, in terms of how it happened, maybe if, if we want to talk about that, I'll lean a little on Jake. So, we're gonna handle it a couple of different ways, there will be a plat note that will be included. And the plat note will be clear that this is what's happening, we will be having a condominium community for association. So the association will be responsible for doing that maintenance. And so in addition to it being on the plat, we'll have it in the condominium declaration documents that it's one of the obligations on the part of the association, and as the association is first formed and it's operated, we'll be in control of that, so we'll know it's an obligation and just get it into the value system and the budgeting as, as we're handling it.
I'd like a dovetail on John's question. I'm concerned about associations, because I'm involved in a few of them that are almost developed. Yeah, so, so what's deficient about this sewer line that needs to be taken out by the, by the HOA?
So I can speak to that a little bit. I can speak to that a little bit, so the sewer line, the town spec had to, correct me if I'm wrong with this, Preston, but it's had to meet a point zero five percent slope. And the sewer line that is in question is only point zero three, four percent slope. That happened, it's such small percentages.
So it's a slope issue, it's not a pipe sewer size issue?
Correct, it's a slope issue, the sizes are all eat spec, and they're installed in the correct locations, it's a slope issue.
So the only issue was slope?
Correct.
Yeah, I can verify that, slope's the only issue, everything else was put into spec, but again, from the staff's perspective, standards are the standards for a reason, those slope standards are the standards for a reason, and so, which is why we're here.
Yeah, I mean, slopes on sewer lines are essential.
And, you know, I'm not an engineer, I like to play one on TV, but sludge is the main concern, certainly some, some stuff, maybe a lot of stuff, those can, can travel up the slope that it's in. But maybe not everything, so that remains a concern.
There are, I'm sure you're aware, there are especially toilets that that have a a higher level of flush, you would say, which I would highly recommend you put in.
Of course.
So do you install a pump to keep the flow going?
So, basically, there's sewer getting companies, they basically bring a truck up that flushes it out, cleans it out. And so we're proposing to the HOA that they do that at a minimum of two times per year, every six months, and we hope that that'll that regular maintenance will be able to keep it clear and prevent the blockages.
And that's what your engineers, contractors are recommending.
So you're putting in a, a, a second cleanup that can be pressurized and with, with
That's correct.
Backflow.
And so once it reaches the main sewer line, you hook up into town, then everything should flow appropriately?
That's the town's responsibility, I would hope so.
Yeah, all, all other segments of sewer runs are installed.
So it's just to get it to the town?
Well, the runs that we're talking about, that Jake's referring to, they're sewer mains, they're runs of sewer main, so we're not talking service lines, service lines are another issue, which are already accounted for in the plat note. Yeah, we're just talking about specific runs of the sewer main. And the plat notes will be, staff will be looking for the specificity on the plat, towards the town, the ability to, if there is an issue, correct the issue ourselves, if there's a reluctance to do that, then charge the HOA or the local as another mechanism to ensure the transfer.
Yeah, I saw that, okay. And then there's also a service line issue?
Service lines, yeah, someone similar, although everything in the grounds is to spec, it's just that there's some tension with all the service lines. Forgetting the word for, it's like a joint, coning joints, there's a word for
Deflection, I think it's what
Yeah, there's definitely the deflection, there was an additional joint part that should have been added, specs required two, only one was installed with the service line, I think it was. So there's concern that that tension could give soon around the later service line, so the plat note that Tom has on the plat is, is clear from the staff's point of view, and identifies that the entirety of the service line, including the Y of the main, is the all-in-one responsibility applies to the property.
But those would be the property owner's responsibility regardless, wouldn't they, the service line?
Right, we just wanted to leave no room for any need.
Right.
And then can I ask how this happened? I'm hoping it was a mistake.
So, it's, if you can imagine what it was like installing the sewer lines over there, our deepest lines are seventeen feet under the ground. Most of these lines are in question are between thirteen and fifteen feet deep, the water table is only six feet underground, so basically, the entirety of these sewer runs are about eight to ten feet underwater, and we were installing them all winter, pumping water out of there. It was rocky, muddy, cold, wet, it was a very challenging working environment. And trying to get the manholes at specific elevations to achieve that slope was extremely challenging. And unfortunately, we missed on a couple of them, which screwed the slope up a little bit.
I know, on a project across the highway, we had talked about connecting the sewer. Is that part of the sewer separate from where we might connect the sewer across the highway? Does that change anything?
No, not, not in relation to this.
They, they go into it, and then it would continue on, it's not through them.
There's just their own problem, it wouldn't
That section did meet town specs, so that, that section is free issue. And, and it's, and it's not connected as well, so it doesn't run through it.
Do we have any other questions about the sewer or the service lines? At this time?
Specifically, no, I did have one other question, I was just curious, is that the HOA fee will apply to all residences, including the restricted units, or?
Yeah, so the HOA will cover all of the units, and allocate out the costs amongst the units, okay.
Jack, go ahead. Town is okay with the emergency access issue, has there been any? It looks straightforward, I just wanna make sure town council's been okay with it.
Well, it hasn't been to town council yet, but town staff is comfortable with what's before you.
Okay, so there shouldn't be an approval concern?
I don't believe so.
It looks to the eye as we were shown during the preliminary plan, so it hasn't changed. The only thing that's changed is we now own the lot too, makes it easier.
So that was shown on the, on the map, and is that just dirt? I think it's gravel.
So the connection on the highway five fifty is actually paved?
No, no, the emergency access.
Yeah, it's gravel.
So that won't be plowed in the winter?
Or, or you're saying?
I'm asking, it's a question, will that be plowed in the winter, or is that just summer emergency access?
It's a good question, it's private property.
We don't get that much snow in town.
With global warming, that's acceptable? Did you have anything else, Pam?
A different question. And this one's picky, I'll admit that right up front, the pole lighting. We're really big on dark sky preservation, and I can tell you, I live in Mr. Terrace, and I still have enough light to cast shadows on my walls at night, there's still so much light coming from town. If, if you could, just consider making them more downsloped, they're just more like a a sloopy pipe, pipe pan kind of shape, and just to control it a little bit more.
They have to be full cover. They have to be full cover, every light they put in has to be full cover, meaning it, it is the dish shape that can't estimate the dark sky. Light has to go down, and I, I bet you dollars to donuts that the shadows cast on your wall are from the Shell station, but
No, they're actually they're from the bar next door.
No.
Partly from the Shell station. It's just that, you know, I noticed it, it's like, I'm a mile away, and there's still
Your points will take it, but you guys are sure putting in dark sky. I mean, if you want, I, I can see if Jim can pull it up on the screen, if you wanna see it, or
I, I did, I read it, I saw it, okay, thank you. You got something, Jack?
Yeah, I've got some questions. You had said something that I didn't hear, you said that you now own emergency access?
Well, so when we started this, there were, we, we own lot two now. So in addition to lot one, which is this subject property, the property that the emergency easement is going on is our property too. So we
I thought I heard you say that, but I couldn't
Yeah, so I ought to be able to figure out how to negotiate with ourselves on it. We've already We've already drafted on
I'm, I'm comfortable with the sewer issue, the way that staff has handled that, I think it learned sense to do it, if it was fifty percent of the five point five, I'd be concerned, but I think staff has handled that. But I wasn't involved in when this thing got started, so I have some pretty preliminary questions, are there living units above the commercial? Are they sprinkled?
Yes. The entire project is sprinkled except for the single-family duplex units. The entire project is sprinkled except for the uh single family duplex units.
This is Jim Keo, our architect.
So uh the whole prop, that was the next question, is all is the whole project sprinkled? Just the stuff along the river is not sprinkled?
The we have uh complied with the international residential code, which is for single plant, family and duplexes along the river for the five buildings. Ten units. And those are not sprinkled. They're two story. And they're, they've got and garages incorporated in them. Those are designed under the residential code, not the international commercial code.
That's fine.
And yes, and furthermore, we 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 don't, we we I guess what I'm saying is they aren't sprinkled per code. And uh I think that's that's the bottom line. I.
I'm not suggesting they need to be. I was just curious to see what was sprinkled and what was not.
Yeah, we have the three story buildings, the commercial building, and the other two uh three unit buildings all sprinkled.
Uh the ten the ten units along the river that you call the duplexes, they're the ones that are going to be entitled to have a short term rental license?
Yeah, I think that's what people contemplate.
So is it possible that you'd be requesting ten short term rental licenses?
I think it was to create the opportunity, but I don't know that that's ultimately, I think our fifty.
No, we don't have any available.
So if if they become available, if there's a different requirement, just allow the opportunity to ask.
And that's up to the individual owner.
Yeah, that's right. Now, we we may regulate, you know, it so so we may say these as opposed to those. I don't know that we're going to do that, but it'd be subject to your reg. So it's those units that are potential and and we you know, so so in any event, yeah, it's up to the individual unit owners. I don't know if we're going to add an additional overlay. You know, like if somebody's not renting a unit and somebody is, we might want to look at that and decide whether or not we want that type of thing to occur.
Nobody wants to live next door.
That's the point. So we might look at regulating that some.
Yeah, just to add on to that note, um I was just curious. I was looking at all the building and I guess you guys described the D one thirty five as townhomes. But then when I look at M one, M two, M three, they're all kind of described as dwelling units. Maybe a tight pack or four trucks. Um I kind of heard condominium um in there. And so I just wanted to decipher my mind, like how how those are different from the townhomes and um that they wouldn't be labeled as townhomes. And how the people that are going to be leaving there in the future, um how is that going to be put and affect to them so they know that they can rent something for short term rentals?
So s- so again, we'll have provisions in our decks that will make it clear what in a section about unit restrictions. What can and can cannot happen um, you know, relative to that. Um and so so I mean that it'll be in the declarations. That's where we'll show it.
But are the buildings themselves, are they, how um how are they deciphered not as townhomes like?
So so this is one lot. We're 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 what you're plating is one lot. And what we contemplated is that we're going to do a condominium overlay of the whole lot. And then we're going to have a series of buildings that are going to be on parcels. And within those parcels, we're going to have units. And so we'll be defining those as certain unit types and parcel types. Um and so we'll be designating which is which, you know, through through that process. So I've been, you know, we, when we're done building the buildings, then we come in and and do that labeling and that processing of the condominium documents themselves specifically. So um it it's really how we end up defining them on on the drawings and then in the decks that'll say this particular space is parcel one, unit A. Um and then we would probably, as I'm thinking about it, probably makes sense to have it back with a table of all the units, whether it can have um a short term rental. Are there other restrictions and things like that? That'd probably be the best way, you know, to capture that.
And so is that stuff being presented to town council before they approve it or?
No, no. So this is to get, this is the plating to allow us to get a building permit to build. And then when buildings are done, then the surveyor comes in and measures them. So we know what the units are. And we would do a condominium map at that point in time that's reviewed through through your staff. I don't know if it's a staff review or who how exactly it is, but it does contemplate that there would be that look at the condominium document itself.
Okay.
We we can't, we can't describe the unit because it doesn't exist and we can't measure it today.
Okay, I was just worried about, because all it says is townhouses can have the short term rentals. I'm just wondering if we want to say there's ten units that we want to be able to have short term because um God forbid, if that one were to happen and let's say there was a fire, like the Miley fires where it wipes everything out and then you have to rebuild. Then can everybody build a townhome and say it's a short term rental? You know, that kind of situation. So I didn't know if it was efficient enough to just say townhomes or if we need to put a number to that. It's just a discussion.
I think the, I think it's clear the number townhomes that that have potential to have that short term rental license. And I think what Tom's just trying to explain is uh we're not at the point yet to pinpoint add more specificity to that. That'll come later when we do a condominium plat or whatever the plating process is called. Now I'm forgetting. Uh but that'll be accounted for in that process and some of the other guiding documents with the HOA.
So it sounds like staff is clear, builder is clear, but yeah.
If if I may, just clarify for a second to TJ. That by definition of townhome in the town code, the only buildings that are townhomes, and I'll specify are those ten units along the river. And the definition means that it's two or three stories where you uh access the ground floor and walk up, and it's all kind of ownership. None of the other units are like that. Uh if you look at um some of the other units, there's parking garages, there's garages underneath. The whole bottom is all garages and then the the two or three stories above it, or the next two stories, I guess, are then condominiums. They're units that are under separate ownership. No one owns kind of top to bottom in any of those other units. Um and same with the larger buildings. Those are multifamily and they've been classified as condominiums. Um and similarly, you drive underneath and then you'd have to either walk out and kind of around to a staircase uh to access your unit. Uh you don't, again, own uh vertically. So it's from a definition standpoint in the code, based on how it was presented and clear in the narrative and the staff report. Uh I think it goes back to definition of the code uh as to what is and is not a townhome.
Thank you, TJ. Thank you. And then I just have one more question, and it's an easy question. On um when I got to the signage page, there was these yellow notes, or they look like notes on my computer, but I can't, I don't know what they are. So if somebody could please tell me if there's supposed to be notes?
Uh Jim, do you know what those are she's referring to? They're probably a note that's between staff and.
No, I, we didn't have any yellow uh PDF notes on the submission.
It's funny, they're not online.
Sorry, I just, I can't, I didn't know what they were. And I, at first I thought they were the lights that weren't, and I showed the sign because that was the first one I saw.
Actually, it might post. Well, it's it's because you're looking at it in in a different app. I I'm looking at it in Adobe and it actually shows um Jim, it does go notes from you. It's like we talked about the lighting and identifies the dimensions. Um see, it's comments. Yeah, I think there's just dimension comments because I have a lot mine too.
So I have to open it differently.
You you don't need to worry about it. It's just dimension comments. It's not anything. It was between staff and.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, if you want to see it, you have to look at it in Japan.
Okay.
So that's, that's all.
Okay.
Good, yeah. Anything on this side? Russ?
Oh, good.
John?
I think I'm good. I'm still still just trying to go through my notes and figure out what um.
Take your time. I can open it to public comment for a moment as is necessary. I'm now opening it to public comment. Do we have any public comment in person or on uh Zoom?
Have many public comment here.
Mr. Mueller, do you have anything for us?
It's an impressive looking project. I wish him well. I think it's uh it's a big deal for Ridgeway.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? I will now close public comment. Um does anyone on the cushion, have they have they come up with anything else?
So just to remind me, is there any, uh there is, is there no uh emergency access to the south into um the area where Citizen State Bank is, between the bank and the commercial building there? I don't think there is. Okay, I I remember it was discussed at one point.
Yeah, they they did not want that. They now have a retaining wall there, so it's too steep for vehicles.
Okay, so there's now great change there.
So just to clarify, the alternative to that alignment was the alignment going on to lot two.
Got you.
And that was acceptable to the fire district.
Right.
The um additional eight feet height, is that in the condominium buildings? That's additional slopes group?
Uh I believe so. That was M two and M three, right?
Correct, the three story.
From the road, it was my biggest concern.
They're the ones set back from the road, Jim?
Yes, they're set back from the river and the road, and they were purposefully designed that way. Uh and one of the reasons was we uh tucked a lot of the parking underneath the buildings to give more green space to the residents.
Yeah, I was just thinking about view lines, sightlines. Thank you. TJ, do you have anything else?
Uh no, unless uh you all have some questions for me. I think you're you're getting a good taste of of the project.
Yeah, definitely. Um following up on Pam's question about the lighting, I'm remembering that I was, I did have some concern about the pole lights. Um Jim, I'm looking at it. I'm zooming in on that pole light in the lighting plan. And it's hard to tell there. It looks like it's an LED that shines up into the reflector. And so then the light's going to reflect back down to the ground from there. There's no, my my main question is, there's no visible uh lighting element like a
Yeah.
Like a ball, the equivalent of a bulb or a or an element um from the side, right?
Correct. It it shines light up to a pan and the pan diverse the deter spends the light down and we call that indirect lighting. It's softer and it's uh it's night sky compliant.
Okay.
And the lighting throughout the project elsewhere are predominantly steplights at doors and stairs. So they're low lights that guide people on a pathway more. Uh and and we've only had the pole lights in the commercial area as requested.
Okay, so outside of doors, um exterior doors, I think require lighting. Those are all just just, I know we're kind of beating the point to death.
Very.
Once it's done, then it's hard to go back and get it right.
Yeah, everything is dark sky compliant. And you know, both Caddis and D H M, who developed this plan, were we predominantly work in the mountain regions and we we have, we have set parameters that we, you know, we that we use ourselves so that we we comply and uh don't struggle with the planning staff. Uh so w- w- we we live in dark sky communities, so we we are very cognizant of that. And um we comply wi- with the general dark sky compliance, the requirements.
Thank you.
I'd like to say that I really love your um light plan, your landscaping plan. It's awesome with all the trees. Um the plan for the park, the parking, that there's parking, um all of it. You guys did such a good job. Um which is why I'm going to improve it.
I have only one thing equivalent. Uh I don't get the syntax of number two staff recommendation. I know I I get the, I get the idea. I just don't get the sentence structure. Uh the note shall be added to the final plat stating that the portions of the sewer line developer will want to continue to home uh uh maintain and repair, which has been approved by the town staff. It just, that does not seem clear to me.
I think it, that's a good point. I think it should say something to the depth. Uh there are portions of the sewer line uh that the developer will continue to own, maintain and repair.
No, what you do is you just strike that were uh that were portions. So it says my additive final plat stating that portions of the sewer line the developer will continue to own, maintain, repair.
Right.
And which have been approved by town staff or some.
How about specific portions of the sewer?
Does it use the word non-standard? Or 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 just?
Just, I think specific portion is helpful because that I guess that they'll be identified on the plat.
I think these these conditions are reflected in the record of all clients, as you say. Uh the conditions as cited by staff and article presentation shared, or conditions that we don't read everything.
Yeah, if if I may, just sorry. Just to clarify um that the specifics of that, I agree with you. That that is a poorly written sentence. Whoever did that should go back to grammar school. But uh um the specifics of it, like the the lengths, the segments are in the staff report. Um and and along with the three components that staff is looking at and being uh addressed in that condition.
And and it's largely going to be uh copying of platino fifteen. Platino fifteen covered the service lines. It's pre- pretty much going to crack that.
Yeah, and if uh just say one more thing that we've talked about it with uh Tom and and their team. We're all in general agreement. We just weren't able to get the language uh tidied up before the the staff report went out. Um so that's, then again, it's not to say that the the language needs to be concise. But maybe we can change the language or through the conversation to say that as described in the staff report um might be a lot cleaner.
Good, thanks.
Miller, are you prepared to make that motion now that you've gotten it straightened out?
No.
I am. That was much better. I I will move that we recommend to town council approval of the final P D and final plat of um Riverfront Village, uh portion of lot one triangle subdivision with all the conditions stated in the staff report that is dated September twenty second, twenty twenty three.
Plus the fourth one.
Plus the fourth one that was added today. Thank you.
So. I think Pam be, I believe Pam seconded it. Thank you. And uh did you get, got all that? Can we get a roll call vote on that? Oh, I guess we can. We're all here. So we can just say uh everyone in favor? The motion, anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you. Glad to have a long haul. Thanks for your hard to get this. Thank you.
Uh, while you're all still here, um meaning the commissioners, you're good. Uh, we've got a, I need an approval of the minutes from uh last meeting.
So.
I second.
Thank you. Um, and uh anyone who
I need to abstain.
Wasn't there should abstain. So all those abstaining?
But you can just say all in favor.
All right. Well, either way, I think it would have worked, but I'll do it your way. Um, all those in favor? All those abstaining?
I will abstain.
Thank you. Um, so that passes unanimously as well with John abstaining. Is there anything else we need to discuss? Anybody? Council have anything for us?
I've got a question for staff. Has anything been going on with four wins? Is that just state why?
Or as far as I know.
Quiet's good.
Yeah.
I think he he said to more than one person that he was pursued, so. I I heard recently he didn't buy it, but I was.
That's one up in Mr. Terrace.
All right. Meeting is adjourned.
All right.
I don't have it.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, TJ.
Yeah, sorry.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thanks, TJ.